I just wanted to let everybody know that this is being recorded. And for those that are remote, it is being recorded.
I call to order this meeting of the Monument Town Council, regular meeting, Monday, April 7th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge.
I would say to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation in this world with liberty and justice.
Ms. Simpson, will you take role, please?
Mayor Lakind?
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Here.
Councilmember Chronic?
Here.
Councilmember Frito?
Here.
Mayor Protem King?
Here.
Councilmember Romanello?
Here.
Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
All right, so we're all here, barely. Disclosure is a conflict of interest. Rebecca, do we have any disclosures? Okay. Then before us, we have an agenda and a consent agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Oh.
Yes.
I thought we were going to do that now. Are we not? We're just waiting?
Are we? I guess we can modify it now, right?
You can.
Let's just modify it now.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make modification to the agenda. And I'd like to postpone to the 21st, March 21st meeting. Item number six on there, which is April, right, April 21st. Item number six, which is resolution number 20-2025, ordinance number 07-2025, and resolution number 23-2025 to April 21st.
Wait, hang on a second. I want to make sure. So number six, all three items on number six?
Correct.
And that is because?
Because the applicant had asked us to do that.
Okay, so we will, is that, is that okay to postpone that to the 21st? Okay, so the mod.
Is it accurate, the applicant requested that?
Um, yeah, they, they, with the understanding that you'd be going into executive session for quite some time, they, they were okay with postponing to the April 21st meeting, and we can accommodate them on that agenda. Right. Okay. We've got a proper removal of item sixes, A, B, and C. Any other modifications to the agenda? Right, seeing none, then I will look for a motion upon the modified agenda and the approval of the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda and approve the modified meeting agenda as specified. Removing items, all of, all of item six until the April 21st meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Simpson?
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Frito?
Aye.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have our executive sessions for the night. These will be for the purposes of going in and interviewing candidates for the town manager position. Do I, have, we have anybody who wants to, you have to do three separate motions, correct, to go in? For one for each? Have any motions for the exec, going into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to 24-6-4024F and 4G CRS for consideration of personnel matters and documents protected by the mandatory non-disclosure provisions of the Colorado Open Records Act, application records for town manager candidate number one, who has been notified of and consented to the executive session.
Second. There we have, let's get all three of them.
Oh, okay. Okay, 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 and I'm, I'm moved to accept or go into executive session pursuant to 24-6-424F and 4G CRS for consideration of personal matters and documents protected by the mandatory non-disclosure provisions of the Colorado Open Records Act, application records for town manager candidate number two, who has been notified of and consented to the executive session. Further, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to 24-6S424G CRS for consideration of documents protected by the mandatory non-disclosure provisions of the Colorado Open Records Act with respect to application records for town manager candidates. I know.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Simpson?
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Frito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Okay, so before we go into, we'll go into executive session, we are going to be going upstairs. Everybody can stay here in the council chambers. For those that are not part of the executive session staff can remain here. And we will be back
We'll be back.
when we have completed that.
For those who are remote, I just want to let you know the executive session could be lasting up to two hours to three hours potentially. I'm going to be turning off the town, regular town council meeting, and we'll, we'll adjourn back on once it's back, once the executive sessions are over. So this will be closed for at least two hours to up to three hours.
Okay, we are back. We're back from our executive sessions. And our next item is number five. Designation of finalist for town manager. Mr. Hill, is there anything that you would like to bring up and discuss?
The only item is saying that I would lean on the guidance of the town attorney on how to approach this item correctly to make sure that we do this appropriately.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion regarding the designation of finalists.
Wait, wait, hang on. Did, did you just ask for advice from, from Bob? Can we?
Rebecca's here, too.
Oh, or Rebecca.
Okay. I was waiting for you to speak, but you were, you were waiting for Bob. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I if you're asking for input from me, I think
The volume is down. We cannot hear Bob.
That's one, two, three, four. That's one, that good?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say that I don't really have anything more to add, other than just to remind you that the, the, the action item is to simply designate whether one, two, or none of these candidates are moved forward for consideration, not, not to decide in any way who, who should be town manager, but just whether there are candidates that should move, move forward for consideration.
As finalists.
As finalists, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Back to your motion, Mr. Kimpel.
He's ready, hang on. He's, he's describing his motion. One moment.
I, I would like to make a motion after completing the executive session and hearing being satisfied, hearing enough, that I would like to move forward with recommending for consideration and designating candidate number one and candidate number two as finalists for town manager.
A second.
Did you catch the motion, Ms. Simpson? Okay. Then we'll take role then on the motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, it'd be appropriate if anybody wants to discuss the motion to also have a discussion for
All right, so before we take the role, is there anybody that would like to discuss the motion?
Okay, well, I'll just bring it up just so we can talk through this week. We have two qualified candidates per our HR department requirements. And I think that both interviews went fairly well, and both have ideas and qualifications that some complement each other and others don't, and so we probably need some further deliberation, but the qualifications were met. And I agree with the motion.
Okay, before we take role, I just was told by a citizen that the video is not displaying on Teams for people. So if Will, can you?
Mr. Mayor, for what it's worth, I am seeing your video.
You, you are?
I am.
I will, I will tell the citizen that it's operator error, or he, he can hear, he can hear that he needs to fix, fix his own teams, stop bugging us.
So are we back to a role then?
So we are at if you could take the role, please, on that motion?
Motion to move forward for candidate one and two, Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Frito?
Yes.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. And six, number six, we are skipping, so now he'll get to
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Bob.
Sorry to keep interrupting, but now before you leave action or item 5A, and you've named these candidates as finals, finalists, you'll need to disclose the names.
Okay, so I should disclose the names?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so candidate, the two candidates that have been named as finalists are Madeline Van den Hoek and Sylvia Simpson.
And just to make note, we can revisit this in two weeks at 9:06 PM, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, two weeks has to go by. Given that two weeks is, at 9:06 PM, is going to be after our next meeting, is it fair to ask if the council wants to push the meeting, but I know there was a scheduling conflict with staff about doing that? Or do we want to wait until the May, the first May meeting to do this? Because staff has made it clear that moving this to the day after, the Tuesday, was going to be problematic.
I was under the impression that we could do it on that Monday as long as it was after 9:06 PM. Wait, is that, Laura, is that true? That's true. We could do it that Monday after 9:06 PM, right? Exactly.
Okay, I hope the agenda fulfills that time requirement. Otherwise, we're gonna have to order pizza or something.
Or we, do we need to move anything else off the agenda in the next meeting to accommodate this priority?
Okay, very good.
Oh, we've got three items, just for driving.
Oh, then that'll, that'll do it. That'll take the time.
There's us.
Okay.
Are there, are there any presentations that we need to move or that can be moved or anything like that, or anything that's, that's, that, is there anything that, that isn't time sensitive on that meeting that, that can or should be moved?
Um, where we have items on there that should fulfill the time slots that we, that we need to fulfill that evening. It's a pretty full agenda, but if it starts to get too full, then we'll, we'll look at moving things around.
Yeah, that, okay.
Okay. Then we will not move the meeting for right now. Thank you. Bob, are we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to number seven, ordinance number 062025, an ordinance amending chapter 18 dot 03 dot 110 of the municipal code to reference the approved official zoning map by a date certain. Mr. Ungalider?
I'm gonna practice for the, the next meeting. Hi. No, hi, don't do that. So this is actually pretty easy. It's best, it's best practice to take a snapshot of your zoning map on an annual basis. So now that we've got a, an excellent GIS person on board who's been doing a fantastic job keeping up our maps and providing them online, we now have an official zoning map that's live, but what we'd like to do is start this year by approving our zoning, our official zoning map by date referenced in the ord, actually in the municipal code. So I have an ordinance before you tonight that takes to the map as we see it today on April 7th. It codifies that date into the ordinance or into the municipal code, and then authorizes myself and Mayor Lakind to sign that document, and we'll put that on display here in the office, and we'll put it on, online as a PDF as well. Any questions?
Questions from?
It's, it's important to note that the map is just an illustration. Of course, all the documents and, and information and activities that occurred in the past are the real documents that we'd always have to go back to, so if there's an error on the printed map, those, those original ordinances are, are the ones that double-tape precedent, so, but I think I'm feeling pretty confident in the document that I have before you tonight.
Now I feel bad, we should have moved this up ahead of the executive session.
That's okay.
This is a
I got a lot of work done tonight, so it's all good.
I thought you said you're watching a movie.
No. Okay, so any questions?
Was there changes done to the zoning map itself with different areas or changing areas?
The most significant changes that you might notice are just placement of boundaries between municipal boundaries around the, around the community. We just refined those to make sure that they were, they were actually showing what was in town and what wasn't in town. There are a few refinements on zoning district or PUD boundaries, just to make sure that they portrayed what was approved and what is in best practice for maintaining zoning districts and so on. But all zoning, all the, all the, the standard zoning hasn't changed, other than, like, I mean, last year, I think we rezoned one piece of property, and that's indicated on the, on the map.
So we won't have to change this after the Denver Road annexation?
No, it'll, it'll just remain on, online. We'll keep modifying it throughout the year, and that sometime next year in January, I would come back before you and just, we would adopt another formal zoning map, just so that we always have something that's official and something to look back on.
Got you.
Welcome.
Okay, this is a public hearing item. So with that said, is there anybody in the, from the public that would like to speak to this ordinance? Will, do we have anybody online? All right, so we will close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the council for further discussion.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 062025, an ordinance amending chapter 18 dot 03 dot 110 of the municipal code to reference the approved official zoning map by a date certain.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Simpson?
Councilmember Frito?
Aye.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. As I noted before, if there, do you have any questions about any of the information that we have on our website or our maps in place? Please don't hesitate to let me know, and I'll, we'll take a look at it to make sure that it's correct. We want to make sure that we're transparent and correct in the information we're providing to the public.
Yeah, the maps have been great.
Yeah, the maps.
I will let Connie know.
And the mapping of the changes to the mapping on the website to make sure that certain districts were shown and, and the information within the districts had been stellar.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll pass that on to Connie. She's been great.
All right, next up, resolution 2025, resolution approving amendment to the IGA establishing the Loop Water Authority. This would be exciting. Mr. Tharnish?
I always do the exciting things.
Apparently you went back to a Navy barber.
Unfortunately, there's a story that goes with that. Say that for another time. Yeah. Good evening, Town Council and Honorable Mayor. The resolution you have in front of you is a amendment to the original agreement establishing, or the IGA establishing the Loop Water Authority. Purpose behind it was once a Cherokee Metro District left, that left three members. It's very hard to conduct business when you only got three members. You can't meet with two of them because you're exceeding the requirements. So the thought was if we can have two members or two people from each member agency, that would give us a total of six people. That will allow us to meet in smaller groups to get some of the business the, the things that typically would get discussed. This is also built so that if we were to add a fourth member back to the original four, then we would revert back to the original four, and you wouldn't need six anymore. So this resolution in front of you is designating both me and Madeline as the two primary members, and then our alternate or backup would be John Rego, which is our current water manager, who is pretty much up to speed with what's going on with the, the business of the Loop. Any questions concerning this resolution?
Questions? I, I have a question about the other members of the authority. Have they concluded doing the same?
I, I believe the other three have, or the other two have already approved the same.
So Woodmore Water and Denala have already named a second and alternate?
Yes. I'm not sure about the alternate, but I would think they have, because that's what you want, is someone to back up, in case you can't be there.
And this is, I just have to ask, this is it still seems that if two members of Monument met with members from either the, or, or you've got a the numbers out, you, you could have a quorum, and it would be unbalanced. So is there gonna have to be a requirement in the bylaws change to equal, make sure that there's equal participation to ensure that, I mean, what you have six members, you have an even number now?
Can I? Can I add to that, to your comment?
Jump on.
Because it was, my understanding also, what I read that was publicly posted was not only did they want to go to a six-member committee, but it has to be unanimous on deciding anything.
That's typically the way it's been run since, since the beginning. As when to get anything passed. Well, that would not, I don't believe
And what happens when you have a dissenter on something that's important, and you can't get something passed because
That's gonna affect like one
That affects everybody involved.
Well, without knowing the, the correct legal answer, my guess, you need to work that out before, you know, before you have to take a vote to finalize things. And if it comes up that someone disagrees with that, then I guess is that, at that particular meeting, it wouldn't pass. So you'd have to go back and resolve the issue and then come back at another meeting.
Has our water attorney been consulted about this?
I don't believe our water attorney has, but he hasn't really been involved too much on this aspect, the Loop Authority. We've had our consultants on board.
Well, what is, has our town attorney been involved in this?
That, I'm not sure. Remember if we had Bob in on this before?
I'm, I'm not sure, because it was sent from the Loop's attorney, so I'm not sure if she sent it to our attorney or not.
This is going from six to four, you said, or?
No, it's, it's going from the current three.
From three to six.
Okay, basically the same three member agencies, each member agency will not have two people appear instead of the one, the way it's been going.
Okay, I, I don't um, okay, I, I, this just seems really administrative, and I don't know that it needs to go to the legal rabbit hole, in my opinion, but okay.
I, I guess I am, I'm inclined to be concerned about an even number of members that have to be unanimously voting for something that impacts three water districts.
Is it, is it unanimous voting? Does that have to be three people now that, that if it was just the three?
That, that part of the IG didn't change when it went from four members to three. So it still wouldn't need to be unanimous, which everything has been since the get-go. We haven't had any concerns brought up by the member agencies that would cause a delay in other to review and correct things.
Okay.
So for the four members were unanimous, then we went down to three, it was unanimous. And the same thing would occur on the six. There's no mention of changing that portion in the IGA, the copy that's in your pack. Just talks about having the ability, if we went to back to a four-member agency, then we'd be back to the four members and no one alternate.
So this, this IGA has not been reviewed by the town attorney?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Right. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, that, that's correct. We did not review this.
Okay.
I, I'm also concerned with, with some, something that the, the mayor brought up, which is the quorum. But I, and maybe I missed it, but I, I didn't see where the, the quorum is set. So if, if you have six people, four show up, you still have a quorum, but that's only two entities that are represented.
Potentially.
Potentially.
What was the, what was the purpose for this change, John?
So that when issues came up and we needed to talk with Woodmore or Denala, with three members, you can't do that at all unless you're in a setting, an open member right, settings, you didn't violate any, any meeting laws. By having six, you, you could meet in pairs to discuss things prior prior to you coming to a meeting to
You couldn't, you couldn't meet in pairs, because if you had two pairs, you created the quorum now.
Right, I, I guess I meant a pair.
So one pair could be two people from different entities, and nothing could, so you could have discussions, which you would then take back to the other person in your pair.
I mean, are you, are you are you worried about, you know, representation?
I've brought up my concerns. I'm worried about the fact that our attorney hasn't reviewed a legal document that's been prepared by the Loop Authority's attorney, and we've not gone through it to make sure that we've got risk mitigation built into this to And we've not gone through it to make sure that we've got risk mitigation built into this to protect the town.
Is there a time sensitive urgency on this that having Bob Cole review it before their next meeting would be an issue to you? Or staff or anything?
Well, I I think there is an urgency to it just because as we go to these meetings, um, again, we can't do anything outside of the meeting with just the three members, so um, the other agencies haven't had theirs added and we're we're kind of the last ones, but.
So everyone else is already added.
Yeah.
When did this? When did this? I mean, this is dated February eighteenth. We are now hearing about it for the first time in April. Why did it take so long for it to get to us and it never was reviewed by the town attorney?
Well, again, the town attorney, I guess the thought process there was it was changing a number of members. It wasn't changing the any other context in here other than having the ability to go back to the original set. Uh, we don't, um, I mean, the dating on there was most likely the first time that I wrote this up and it's gone through some changes and we had to wait for the other agencies to figure out when their next meetings were for them to get approved.
Bob, can I get some feedback from you and Madeline? If you have anything to say on this, I'd like to hear it from you as well.
I would agree. If you, you know, the thirty thousandth of you.
I think from my perspective, we're really trying to watch attorneys' costs and because the Loop Attorney did review it. Um, we felt like that was and and the other agency attorneys reviewed it. We felt like that was sufficient for this.
Okay. I don't disagree that the Loop, the Loop Attorney um, is making a good recommendation. However, the Loop Attorney does not represent the town. And while we are part of the Loop Authority and we we paid into it, the Loop Attorney should have made themselves present to answer legal questions since they drafted the document. That's just my opinion, but when we have legal questions, we typically ask our attorneys and this one is not here to explain.
Oh.
Bob, I I asked Bob for some feedback too. I didn't get anything.
What about the concept?
I I totally understand the concept. I think it's a sound concept. And I'm looking over the amendment right now.
Why don't we go to the next resolution and give?
Oh, okay. He was in the middle of talking.
Yeah, I I was just gonna say I I need to pull up the the primary agreement and and take a look at a couple of provisions before I could really give you a substantive recommendation. I I don't, just looking through it quickly, I don't see anything that's of great concern. But I'd want to.
With that, I guess what I was gonna ask, I wasn't trying to interrupt you, uh, and Mr. Mayor, I wasn't trying to interrupt him. I was just gonna suggest. Is it? And I was gonna ask him, is it something that if we went to the next two resolutions that you might be able to give us a more polished response? If we come back to A after B and C, that's all I was gonna suggest or ask.
Yes.
Yes, that's possible.
That's fine.
That was all I wanted.
Okay, we'll come back. So while our attorneys are reviewing the resolution and the IGA, we will move on to resolution twenty one twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing agreement with GOVOS for consultant services to business tax renewal software and maintenance services. Uh, Ms. Phillips.
Counsel, I'm Lori Young. Um, I'm presenting this on behalf of the finance team. Um, basically because I've been working closely with Sophia Hausman on this project, and so I'll be available to answer any specific questions that come up. Um, essentially, the resolution is to renew our contract with the software that we're currently using for the implementation of the self-collect. The current contract expired on February twelfth of twenty-five, and so we're looking to renew the contract, and this is just the software piece. We have encountered some difficulties with this process. Um, we've had some roadblocks, some delays on the software side, so in light of that, the GOVOS has agreed to credit us half of the annual cost for the software. Um, so that we will have a to not exceed amount of fourteen thousand four hundred uh, twenty dollars for this current software period.
Have those issues been worked out and they're not going to come up again?
We are optimistic. Um, there's no certainty with that, but honestly, they've been working with us really hard. We've had some good meetings with them. I think they've prioritized us as a customer and are working really hard to do their best.
I have a question. There.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, is this an annual renewal?
It is.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a question that's a little outside of the contract, but it might be part of this system. So since we're self-collecting now, um, in town, you know, the businesses can be established and they figure out how to pay the town or however that works, but what about companies like online companies and, um, did you? Okay. Yep, I brought it up to to Madeline and. Okay. She was. How does how does that part of it work?
We have, um, we preloaded all of the existing businesses that filed sales tax through the state that we are aware of. So we've captured as many as seventeen thousand businesses, including all the remote sellers. Um, there's no guarantee that it's a hundred percent captured, but we know that they are obligated to collect sales tax and then remit that to us. Um, so we only know what we know unfortunately in that regard.
Sure.
But we are sending out delinquency notices if they have not, like if they are preexisting in our system and they have not filed yet. Um, Sophia prepared estimates on the large filings. And so we've contacted them via mail and email. And so we're doing our best to capture anyone that we've missed.
And if and if it goes to the state, does the state still reimburse?
They will no longer collect.
I see.
So they've put a block in place so that state, um, businesses who have attempted to file with the state, um, their portion to the town is rejected. And so ideally, they reconcile that and they notice that those amounts have been returned to them or unsuccessfully remitted.
It's all electronic.
Then they reach out to us.
So you you were contacted by a local auto uh, sales, an auto company because they detected the block and they weren't sure where to collect and they're in the Springs. Big, a big auto company, I gave them Jennifer's name to to contact. Uh, they have been trying to figure out how to pay us for residents who have purchased cars from them, uh, but unable to remit the sales tax to us because they're in our zip code or in our town.
Um, my understanding, the motor vehicle, um, purchases would still go through El Paso County through the Department of Motor Vehicle.
So is El Paso County rejecting or not giving giving us our taxes?
We receive a monthly report from them, so if I can look into that, I don't know.
As far as sales tax goes, so that doesn't run through the state?
No, the motor vehicle runs through El Paso County. So when you register your vehicle, you go through the county.
So that's that's how they usually have paid in the past and in the county.
Right.
Okay, I understand. So you haven't had any recent calls from a car dealership? Well, then I'm gonna have to reach back out to the general manager who said he was trying to pay us because he I'm gonna go knock on his door and collect. I'm gonna have to bring.
I'm the one car dealer that I have talked to personally is, um, I believe his name is Clint. He's the discount sales.
No.
But he's the in-town.
Yeah, this is a this is a Colorado Springs, very large dealership that called me directly to general manager to say I don't know how to pay the town of Monument. We're getting or they were not given notice on how to do this change with self-collection and.
I, yeah, I'm not aware, sorry.
It's okay.
I can certainly do some research and get back to him.
I'm just gonna knock on his door. But I will.
It sounds like that.
Uh, that's my line. Excuse me, hello.
Sounds like that particular process should not have had a change for them, so that definitely have them reach out to our finance department. So I'd also like to recognize the incredible work that Lori has put into this process, uh, personally reaching out to our businesses to help them going to their locations, being on the phone with them. So she's worked really hard to make this transition really nice.
I know it's gotta be super complicated, but once you get it all figured out, it should.
Yeah, that's the ideal.
That would be the understatement of the month. Uh, I do, I do have one question. On page four, it talks about automatic renewal. Is this to to existing contract? That does this mean that once we approve this contract, it auto renews every twelve months or are we gonna get notice?
We will get invoiced every year.
Okay.
Um, being that it's the software, all the data is there.
Okay.
Ideally, we will continue the relationship. We don't have to.
Okay, no, in 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 terms of do we have to authorize the money every year or once we, okay?
Yes.
Yes, it's over the spending limit.
Yeah, so but my concern is the auto renewal, it's not gonna auto renew before we get a chance to.
They won't automatically get the money.
Okay.
Because we can't do multi-year line items because of Tabor.
Okay, so, okay.
All right, so if there's no other questions about this resolution, um,
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one twenty-two-five, resolution authorizing an agreement with GOVOS for consultant services to business tax renewal, software and maintenance services.
Second, yeah.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Ms. Simpson.
Councilmember Kempo.
Yes.
Mayor Lakind.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Frigito.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim King.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, resolution twenty-four twenty-two-five, resolution authorizing filing of a petition for annexing of Old Denver Road. Ms. Van den Hoek.
Good evening, Counsel. This is just the start, um, the petition, um, to annex the portion of Old Denver Road from, um, the segment that's from Rancho. I lost the the Ranchero, um, and Baptist Road. Um, so this is just to allow me to file the petition with our planning department.
Okay, um, any members of the council have any questions for Madeline? Okay, then I will look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four twenty-two-five, resolution authorizing filing of a petition for annexation of Old Denver Road.
Second.
Second, Ms. Simpson.
Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim King.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Frigito.
Yes.
Mayor Lakind.
Yes.
Councilmember Kempo.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Why do I have to be last again? Yes.
Sorry.
Wow, all right. I make a motion to make Chronic first all the time. Um, all right, let's go back real quick to see if, uh, Mr. Cole's had an opportunity to uh, review and make comment on twenty-two-five.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm probably gonna repeat some of what Mr. Tharnish said. Uh, as stated in the, uh, this First Amendment, the purpose is to do really two things to, um, change the number of members on the Board of Directors of the Loop Authority. Um, it would change change that to, um, six members if there are three or fewer members of the board. Uh, well, if there are three members, if there's less, uh, there would be there would be, um, either four or or two members because, uh, for three or fewer members, the board's gonna be comprised of two representatives from each member. If there's, uh, more than three members of the Loop Authority, then it drops to one. So that would facilitate, uh, I think what Mr. Tharnish was was talking about, it would facilitate some one-on-one conversations between the members without constituting a quorum or otherwise imposing open meetings requirements. The second thing that the amendment would do, it changes the quorum requirements there. Excuse me, not the quorum requirements. I'm not talking about that now, but it changes the vote requirements. The current agreement requires a unanimous vote of all members. The amendment would change that to a unanimous vote of members present at the meeting. Uh, so it makes it a little more functional uh, in terms of getting business conducted. Uh, and takes away the ability of a member to filibuster uh, activities by not being present. Um, but it does set up the the potential that you wouldn't actually have a unanimous decision if you have absences at the meeting. So depending on what your desire is, that's the impact of the amendment.
Okay.
It seems it.
Thank you for your assessment, Mr. Cole, on that. I appreciate it. Um, it sounds like there's gonna be some discussion, uh, from the members of the council. I think you should feel free to voice your concerns.
I, um, I'll I'll easily go on the record saying that I don't do not like this, um, this resolution with the fact that I know it's a workaround to try to get communication going and to allow for two agencies to talk without having, uh, considered to be a quorum. But I like the fact that a meeting would have to be scheduled where all three agencies are at the table talking about stuff. Um, but the other part that was just brought up about the, uh, the voting. I I'm just, I'm just against that.
Yeah, I don't like it either. I don't like the, um, it just again, if you if if one of the members decides that they're against something, they just don't show. And no.
Well, but they can't fill up, they can't use that as a form of filibuster and that means the other two agencies could vote without them and override that. And that's problematic.
Exactly. That's my point. Thank you.
What's the point of voting voting then if if you just that's that defeats the purpose?
But 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 why? But then I don't see why anybody just wouldn't show up just to 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 stop it and the challenge that we have is is the other agencies have already appointed their two members, so if we don't do this, we're they're they're going forward with it anyway, right? And we're just kind of stuck or what's the what's the outcome there?
Uh, give me twenty seconds and I'll tell you.
That's and and I'll hear from Tom first. Thanks, Bob.
Then the other part is we're we're adding workload to our.
Interim Town Manager.
Not necessarily. Know that I do attend all of the meetings, even though Tom is the official member, so and and the other agency, their alternates um, also attend the meetings, so it's not technically an an additional meeting.
I guess I wouldn't have a problem with the the count of people that are considered required to the the ability to have conversations. I do have a problem with the ability of a member agency being overridden because of a lack of participation. But this is a pretty big deal. Who's gonna participate?
That's the way I think this is. I don't think there's any, I think this is pretty benign and administrative and there's not really an agenda here. And I I that's just the way I'm seeing it and that's why I wanted Bob's feedback on it and staff's, but go ahead, Tom. I'm sorry. I brought you up.
But that's why we have contracts and that's why we do IGA's is you you dot and cross and you want to make sure it's in writing.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, um,
in of all the meetings we've had, I think in the past, I may have missed one back a couple of years ago. Other than that, me and Madeline are usually present at every single meeting. So has the other member agencies with our alternates. And I suspect that anything going forward here would, would be, would be in the same realm.
And it's not a matter of count of votes, it's a matter of an, an agency vote. It's not like, you know, you and Madeline are gonna be on different, I mean, someone's gonna show up and represent the agency. That's still what's happening here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll always be someone here for us.
All right, I, I'm okay with this, but that's just my point of view.
Mr. Mayor, on the question, what would happen if the town didn't approve it, since the other two parties did already approve it? The original agreement does require unanimous approval of all the parties to amend the agreement, so if Monument doesn't agree to this, then the amendment would not be enforceable. And I guess I'd just point out one other thing, it may be obvious to you, is, is this, this new board makeup does set out the ability to appoint the, the alternates, so in that regard, there's, there's not a lot of excuse for not having your members at a meeting. So I'd just point that out.
Well, it's, it's been this way since the beginning, correct? And you're just adding people.
He, he said that there was a change. The, the change, the change is that if, if a member agency, Monument, does not show up, the other two have the ability to vote anyway and override the, the missing agency.
Right, but my point is, it's been unanimous all along.
And I don't see us not showing up, I mean.
Every vote that we have taken since this Loop Water Authority was formed has, has been unanimous. I cannot remember a single time when somebody dissented or had an argument that didn't wanna go away. I mean, usually we see the decisions coming ahead of time. Right now, there's a bunch of RFPs going out for different phases. So it's not, I don't think we even had arguments going back to all the meetings I've been to, unless you remember any, Madeline. It's been pretty unanimous in everything we do.
Part of the reason is you have a contract in place, you have an IGA in place that tells everybody what the rules are. And that's why I, I just think it's, you dotted across the darn thing, and so that everybody knows the rules. And this doesn't happen, not that it hasn't happened before, that's not the issue. The issue is you're preventing it from happening in the future.
I can't foresee a situation where the two people or two alternates, we wouldn't have somebody there representing us in a meeting. That just seems very unlikely.
Then there shouldn't be an objection to putting it in the document.
Any other discussion on this?
No, but I'll, if there is none, I'll just make a motion anyway to approve Resolution Number 202025, a resolution approving an amendment to the IGA establishing the Loop Water Authority.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Simpson?
Councilmember Chronic?
I'm gonna say no.
Councilmember Romanello?
Yes.
Mayor Protim King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Think, I feel like I, I don't have enough to say yes. I feel like something's missing for me, so I'm gonna say no at this time.
Councilmember Ferrerito?
I'll, I'll second what Santa said. Something's off, something's not sitting right with me, so I'm gonna say no.
Mayor LaKind?
No.
Councilmember Kempel?
No.
That motion fails two to five. I would suggest, based on council comments, that go back to the Loop Authority Attorney. And they make themselves present at a meeting where they can discuss this with us and understand our concerns about the item related to if somebody were not to show up, that they, they would be overridden. And any other questions or comments that come up from the council? All right, that's resolutions for the night. We will go up next to our discussion item, Ms. Van den Hoek, Silver Key Active Adult Center.
Well, good evening, Counsel. This is largely a discussion really in how we should move forward with working on this project. Just for a little history, the way that we got involved in this project is we were able to utilize through DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, some technical assistance to help Silver Key with some conceptual designs and community outreach for a potential new senior center. Now that the school district has made some changes and the senior center is looking for a new home, they are evaluating new locations and where they might rehouse this senior center. We've been involved up to this point, but I need to understand what council's direction is for moving forward and our involvement with this project. They're potentially looking at a parcel of land that a developer is talking with them about. They're looking at a potential partnership with another agency in town. And I just need to have some direction, and we, and we might not have that direction tonight. We might not have enough information. I did not invite Silver Key to be here yet because there is still a lot of unknowns at this moment. But just wanted to bring it up, start the conversation, and if we need to continue it, that's fine too.
Okay. Is there, if there's more information that needs to be given to council, when would we expect that we could see it?
I think it largely depends what kind of information you'd be looking for. I don't think Silver Key has a lot of answers yet. At one time during some of these technical assistance meetings, we had talked about being able to potentially partner with them on some funding from DOLA. That would require us to be pretty involved in this project in order to apply for that funding. Or potentially other grants that we might have access to that they would not. DOLA is the only one I could really think of, though, that's, that would be applicable, but there's really not a lot of information. However, a number of us have been involved in this project and keep being invited to it, so it'd be nice to have some idea of how much we should be still involved in the project or not.
A DOLA grant would require fifty percent matching?
Correct, and you can, DOLA has changed their funding a little bit, but you can apply for up to a million dollars, which would require a five hundred thousand dollar match from us.
Wow, but, but the match from us technically could be provided for by Silver Key, correct? It wouldn't necessarily come out of our general funds.
Potentially, but I do believe that the town of Monument would have to have some sort of financial obligation.
Okay, I think the council would probably need to hear what that obligation would be. As well as I think we need to hear from Silver Key what their ask is.
Okay. So in the future, I'll, I'll talk with Silver Key and I will find out kinda when they might like to come to council and make a presentation on their next steps.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public comments for items on on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here in Town Hall that would like to make comments? Seeing none? Will, you have anybody online? Okay, then we will move on to Madeline's favorite topic, future agenda item authorizations.
I don't have any items for you tonight.
Okay.
Sorry to disappoint you.
Christmas in April. Okay, then as far as council comments, I have one. After our mock-up tomorrow, how soon do we expect that we will start using the electronic voting capabilities that are built into the application? This has got nothing to do with the mock-up per se.
Correct.
But the electronic voting, when do we expect that we can start?
So we anticipate that being available at the next meeting. So with, with Sylvia clerking the meeting tonight, we didn't feel comfortable making that change, but with Tina being back for the next meeting, we, we plan to make that change next meeting.
So probably Tina and Sylvia will be here to see if it works or crashes and burns.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And they've both worked really hard to make sure that this has happened. Laura's worked really hard on this project, so in theory, we should be good to go, but as with everything, there is learning curves and technology, so patience.
Yes.
Call us also.
Electronic.
Everybody needs to be present, logged in, if we're good, if we're going live.
Right, because when you click on that meeting button, it's gonna ask you if you wanna log into the meeting. And that, that enrolls us to do the ability to vote.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you for that. Is there any other? Okay, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
On favor? We are adjourned.